The meeting of the Marquette City Commission is called to order on Tuesday, October 15, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, may I have the roll call?
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Otte? Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
May I approach him, Hanley?
Here.
And Mayor Davis?
Here. Commissioners, could I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Otte? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd like to make the motion to excuse Commissioner Otte as his career takes him to hurricane-riddled parts of the U.S. for insurance work. Boy, I hope he's doing okay. He's been really busy. So I did check with him to make sure that he was okay with me to mention it.
Have a second. Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is that enough comment, do you think? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us, and I'm looking for a motion for approval. Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
And the second? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Any comments?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. I have a couple announcements. You might have noticed we have an election coming up. If you have a absentee ballot, we can drop them off in the slots, or you could mail them. And early voting will begin on October 6 and runs through Sunday, November 3 at the Peter White Public Library. And the site is open from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM each day. In addition to the early voting, the clerk will be operating a satellite clerk's office at the early voting site Thursday, October 31 through Sunday, November 3 for those individuals looking to register to vote. And then, of course, the actual voting day is November 5. And it's important to note that the Peter White Public Library serves as an early voting site only for the City of Marquette residents. The other thing I want to mention is that our tourist park has closed for the season, and I know there's a lot of people that are anxious to get out there with their dogs. So if you are a resident who likes to use our tourist park dog site during the wintertime, make sure that you have your pet license and purchase a pass for the dog park. Is that okay? Okay. All right. And then we will move on. Boards and committees, we have one appointment. Commissioners, any may have a motion? Pro Tem Hanley?
I move that we appoint Julie Benda to the Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 5/30 of 26.
And a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'll second the motion.
Any comments?
Just, it's really nice to see people willing to join our boards and committees, and I hope she has a very good time on that one.
Yeah, it's a great committee. Thank you for your contribution, Julie.
Other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Which brings us to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments, and come up to the podium, please. Anyone wishing to make public comment? Good evening. I've worked in the field of healthcare for over 25 years, and I have been blessed to have as my teachers some of the most... Please state your name and... Oh, sorry, sorry. Valerie Olson, 116 Hillcrest. I've worked in the field of healthcare for over 25 years. It says two minutes and 35 seconds. How can it be? I just came. I just started talking. It didn't give me three minutes. I believe it starts when you step up to the podium. On September 24 of this year, Judge Edward Chen concluded a seven-year federal lawsuit against our EPA by ruling that the addition of fluoride to public water at the dose used by 70% of our cities in America, including Marquette, poses an unreasonable risk of neurological harm to our children and the unborn. This was a landmark federal ruling against the EPA who failed to complete studies showing safety for children and the unborn prior to recommending this practice throughout the nation. The EPA attempted to delay the trial several times by delaying the publication of the National Toxicology Report, which resulted, it was the result of a six-year review of over 60 studies, 52 of which showed a direct correlation between fluoride consumption and neurological issues in children and the unborn. Our dentists have been taught to trust our dental and health agencies, as my own father was, but the trial revealed the conflicts of interest that are driving these agencies, including the CDC, to defend their stance on fluoridation regardless of the science. Both the unreasonable risk of harm to our children far outweighs any dental benefits. There are many safe ways to address dental concerns. As a result of the federal ruling, many cities throughout America have already chosen to end this practice of water fluoridation or to suspend them. I'm asking you, as our city officials, who are called to act in the best interests of the members of this community, to please suspend the practice of water fluoridation in our city in order to protect our children and the unborn from further harm. Both Iron Mountain and Houghton have refrained from water fluoridation. I also ask that you please refrain from the purchase of additional fluoride chemicals for future use, as this would be morally wrong in the light of this recent federal ruling. I believe that God has given to each of us the gift of life, as well as the responsibility to protect our bodies and those of our children from unnecessary harm. I ask that you address this issue promptly with open communication and dialogue with the people of this community. Thank you for all you have done to address the needs of our community and for giving this urgent issue your immediate attention. Anyone else for public comment?
Geraldine Nalt, 1851 North McCollin Avenue. I want to thank the City Commission for the opportunity to attend the Marquette Citizens Academy. It was extremely interesting. All the presenters and the tours were just wonderful. If anybody in the community has a chance to attend the academy, I would highly recommend it. And I wanted to thank you tonight because I am unable to be at graduation next weekend, which saddens me some. I think it's going to be a nice celebration. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Lynn Barbier. I live in Marquette.
Could you give us your address?
766 Lost Creek Drive. I am also requesting that the Commission seriously consider stopping the fluoride in the Marquette water. I have three generations of young people under me, and I am concerned because the rulings have found that it really causes ADHD and neurological damage to unborn and children, as well as its influential in early dementia and Alzheimer's. That's something that all of us should consider. And if you think about it, when you dine in many of Marquette's fine and fun restaurants, their food is all prepared with fluoridated water, their beverages are mixed with fluoridated water. Even if you might have some kind of a filter system in your home, not all filter systems are taking out the fluoride. So if you choose one way or another on this issue, please ask yourself why. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, my name is Sarah Middlefelt, 505 Albert Street. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have. Agenda item five, I believe, the approval of the Community Master Plan. Appreciate everyone's work on that. And it was a two-and-a-half-year process. We had hundreds of comments between our survey, our public forums. It was a really, I think, really a great process that we can be proud of. So if you have any questions, we're just here to answer anything you might have about that. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gail Morgenimi. I've lived in Marquette Township, 2272 Warner Street, since 2009, believing I was drinking good water. And I found out that my water filter from Amway was not filtering out fluoride. So I was pretty floored after I drank water for 13 years. And the reason is because I'm a former resource specialist from California, and I saw the effect in people's lives, their children's lives, that I taught. So what we're talking about is under federal issues right now, and we realize that, but it's a clear indication of what I've seen when I was teaching. It's affecting the kids' IQs as well as their ability to concentrate, okay? And that's coming from me as a professional. So I'd like you to really consider it, because if you go in and read some of the studies that I've read, you'll realize the science is behind it. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Carrie Gottlieb, 1076 South Lake Street. I am also with the Planning Commission. I echo our chair's comments that I urge you to consider passing the, the, sorry, Community Master Plan as presented. We spent a lot of time and effort on our side, and I know we've worked with you guys, and I really think it is pretty good the way we presented it, and I'm hoping you pass it. I'm with Sarah. If you have any questions, we're here for you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, City Commissioners. I wanted to start by, oh, my name is Gwen Storm, and I'm at 1027 Second Street. First of all, I wanted to thank you all for what you do every day to take care of the City of Marquette and its citizens. I want to thank you for taking the time to hear some of the concerns that have been brought up this evening regarding the continued practice of water fluoridation. And I hope that as our elected officials, you would educate yourself and understand the liabilities involved in the continued purchase of fluoride to add to our water supply. People today, parents, I'm a parent as well, are already fighting an uphill battle to raise a healthy family. We live in a space between scientific knowledge and government action, and even in the face of evidence, we often resist change. For example, our knowledge that lead is toxic has dated back to 200 years before Christ. And efforts to ban lead in paint began in the 1920s but did not succeed federally until 1978, thanks in part to research that proved that even at lower levels, it was still harmful to the human brain. Despite this, the U.S. did not ban it from gasoline until 1996. Our homes, especially the homes in Marquette, remain a testament to the lingering effects of government-delayed action and negligence. Lead paint coats our windows and doors. Asbestos, a proven human carcinogen with no known safe level of exposure, lies in our insulation, heating systems, flooring, and ceiling tiles. PFOS is a chemical proven to be extremely persistent in the environment and the human body, in our carpeting, makeup clothing, our food and water systems. Here, even on the shores of one of the largest freshwater lakes in the world, we must review the science and ask ourselves if the practice of water fluoridation is both safe and necessary for our community. With so many complex problems in the world, it can be hard to see how one individual can make a difference with a lot of these systems because they're so vast, and one person can hardly change the whole world. But this is one of those rare opportunities where your thoughtful consideration and action can make a difference, not just for the children of today, but for generations to come. So thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration and all that you do, and appreciate the time.
Hi, Willie Rusneck. I'm at 125 East Magnetic Street. I appreciate you all being here and listening to us. I'm also hoping that you'll be able to change the fluoride in the water situation. And I guess in my appreciation of you, I've done a little bit of polling research for you, and I've only found one person in opposition to this. So hopefully, that's a consideration that you might be concerned with, because I've talked with at least 30 people or so on this, and most people are in opposition to having it. And then, for that one person who was for it, I did a little bit of research for them, and most convenience stores and even Walmart has, like any other vitamin fluoride supplements they can buy that are cheap. It's like 14 bucks for 90 doses, so that will last you a while. So even if people do still want to be able to fluorinate themselves, they can, if they so choose. The other thing is, I really always liked Marquette as being a leader in the UP, and I don't really see why we should be lagging behind other cities that have already gotten rid of that. And just as the last piece here, now that there is a federal level ruling on this, it's not really a risky policy change anymore for the city, and it can be justified as a sound decision that doesn't have, you can basically back it up and say, this is the right reason why we did it, and there's precedent in law that allows us to be able to make this decision. So we're not really liable for not doing that anymore. And so those are the things that I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment? Okay, public comment is now closed. We will move on to our presentations. We have two presentations this evening. First is a certificate of appreciation for Detective Captain Greg Kennan. I assume that our chief, okay, please come forward.
Come on up, Greg. Come on up, Greg. All right. Captain Greg Kennan began his career at the Marquette Police Department in 1997 and just finished his 27th year. He was our 2000 Patrolman of the Year and has since worked his way through the ranks on the detective side of the department. On a personal note, when I started a few years after him, he was the first one to take me under his wing and teach me how to be a police officer. He was dedicated to his job and outworked everyone. I remember many nights working with him as his partner, running call-to-call and getting back to the station to try to figure out what to do. And of course, being the junior guy, he made me do all the reports. So, yeah, got to have his fun, but you know, I paid for it. Exactly. But on a serious note, Captain Kennan dedicated his life to keeping our community safe and has done an amazing job. He excelled as a patrolman, but he really showed us what he was capable of when he became a detective. He has been involved in almost every major case that we've had during his time here, utilizing his years of experience and his dogged determination to make sure justice was served to the best of his ability. Greg worked his way through the ranks as a detective and was promoted to captain in 2020. Since then, he's transformed the Bureau into what it is today with his strong leadership. The Road Patrol and Detective Bureau work together seamlessly on cases, which translates to the high-quality police service that we can provide to our community. Greg has been my partner, advisor, and most importantly, my friend for many years. I wish him the best in retirement. And we'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation for all your years of service.
Yep. Thank you, everybody. I just want to say, 27 years, it's been my privilege to work for the Marquette Police Department and serve the citizens of the City of Marquette. But on top of that, I've made a lot of good friends. I've met a lot of good people. We've had a lot of good times, bad times, some mediocre times. A lot of time on a midnight shift in a car when, you know, quiet, middle of February night, we really got to know each other during that time. But what I want to say is, I couldn't have done it without these people. I'm very proud of this department and the men that are in it, and women, sorry. And every other woman involved that came out bad. I didn't mean that. But I just want to say that the City of Marquette is in very good hands, and I'm leaving here with pride and appreciation for the men and women of this department. So I want to thank you all. Thank you very much.
Detective Kennan, and thank you for your years of service. You said that you're leaving us in good hands, and that's probably because you trained our Chief of Staff so well. And also, having been Officer of the Year is a nice commendation for you. So thank you so much. I think you'll be missed. Okay, we'll move on to our next presentation, was the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, and we have our Deputy City Manager, Sean Hobins.
I know. The Police Department definitely doesn't have to stay for this. I do want to say, I don't often insert my personal opinion into things, but I've had the privilege of working with Captain Kennan for quite a while now, and it really has been an honor to work with you. Congratulations on your retirement. I couldn't miss the chance to say that. All right. Real excitement. This is the, huh? It's over already. There we go. Trying to go for a record on that. This is the annual presentation for the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board. If you are familiar, or if you're not, we have three municipal entities who partner in running our wastewater treatment plant, the City of Marquette, Marquette Township, and Chocolatet Township. This is our board. I think we're going to be lucky enough to keep Jim Compton, even though, as you saw at the last meeting, he is retiring from the city. But he indicated to us that he is probably going to be sticking around, and it's very useful to have a hydrology engineer on this board, so I'm really grateful for that. And I do believe we're going to be losing Bill DeGroot, the supervisor, no supervisor, the township manager of Chocolatet Township, as he just resigned his post. But we'll be interested to see who gets appointed to fill that spot. I'm assuming it'll be the next township manager, so we'll see who that ends up being. We do meet once a month, on the third Thursday of each month, at the Marquette Area Wastewater Treatment Plant, except for occasionally, we do go out to Chocolatet Township and Marquette Township to hold our meetings, but we do post those in advance. The purpose of this, like I said, we were established by intergovernmental agreement in 1977 to basically advise the operations of the wastewater treatment plant. The ownership of this plant is divided in three ways. The City of Marquette is the contract operator of the facility and owns 84%. Marquette Township owns 9%, and Chocolatet Township owns 7%. You all might remember that Chocolatet Township did purchase a larger share of the plant a few years ago. It just made sense to them with some expansion that they are experiencing in the township. Our primary mission is to make recommendations regarding the proposed operating budget for the wastewater treatment facility and to receive reports and provide some guidance to our very skilled operators and utility director. Just some history. The treatment plant planning initially started in 1941. I will leave it to your imagination where the sewage of the City of Marquette went before we decided to pipe it down there and treat it. But we do have quite a big harbor down there, so there we go. But the plant was constructed in 1951. It received a secondary treatment upgrade in 1978, and then it was redesigned and had some additional construction in Some highlights. We treated over 1 billion gallons of sewage in 2023. We maintained a stable budget. I'm not sure which is more impressive, stable budget, billion gallons of sewage. We maintained minimal permit violations. You know, there's always going to be some weather event or something that violates the permit here or there, but it's really minimal, and it's really a testament to the skill, planning, and quality of our operators, how efficiently and cleanly we're able to run this plant. The fire alarm system has finally been replaced. This has been a very, very long project that I think the board was tired of hearing about, waiting for that completion. We got it in place a while ago, but we're waiting for the final test and activation, and it finally has been done. So, these are, you know, maybe mundane details to y'all, but it's really big news to our advisory board, so. And during several challenging rain events, the wet weather plan has prevented numerous permit violations, even when other communities around the UP receive permit violations for those same events, so. Just as an example of what normal flow at the plant looks like, you know, pay attention to these concrete structures that are running across, and that's a challenging rain event. So you can see just the level of flow that comes about when we receive an extraordinary amount of water to the plant. Our goals for the upcoming year would be a successful startup of the solid handling improvement project process, so completing that construction and actually starting the intake of the additional solids. Pursue more land application sites, we're looking for additional agricultural land to apply some of the leftover product to as fertilizer. Continue updating our asset management plan, rebuild the reserve replacement fund, and promote staff development. Just elaborate a little bit on the solid handling improvement project, you know, y'all have approved every step of this investment, but it was a big one, and it's worth diving into a little bit. It was a fourteen million dollar project funded with a state-of-Michigan Clean Water Low Interest Loan that included five point eight six million dollars in loan forgiveness. So that, that's money that came to our city facilities, to our utilities, that we don't have to pay back because it was forgiven. The project is on time and on budget, and is expected to be completed in January twenty twenty-five, so, next year. Whoever's presenting for this board will be able to tell you, all good. This project adds several improvements. We add biosolid storage, so we meet the required one hundred and eighty-day storage. That was a huge motivator for this, so we continue to comply with state permitting. We added a new belt filter press for redundancy. If you don't know what a belt filter press does, it squeezes the water out of the solids, so, more fun visuals for you. We are adding a septic receiving station that'll add revenue and increase biogas production. We use biogas to run the Cogen generators on the plant site, so we're able to use the waste gas to help power the plant there. And being able to take in septic is hopefully going to be a revenue generator for the plant. We're adding post-irration to eliminate permit violations. This pumps oxygen into the water that we send out of the plant to make sure it's safe for aquatic life. Think about, we have a bubbler in an aquarium, so fish can have oxygen to, you know, breathe. Same concept here. And then vector pad improvements. This is our current biosolid storage facility, unimpressive. Here's our new solids handling storage, beautiful, so, it's not impressive, it's just not as beautiful. And here's our new septic receiving station. Any questions?
Commissioners, questions or comments? Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Sean, great presentation. I remember back when we were first looking at a lot of these improvements, it was kind of daunting, but I'm really impressed with how we've managed the finances and getting the loan forgiveness and the grants. These kinds of improvements are why we've had to do the unfortunate work of raising the water, stormwater and sewer rates, so that we can have stable infrastructure for years to come, so I hope this is something we can all be proud of as a community. Thank you.
Other comments, questions?
And I'd just like to know that all credit for all this work goes to the plant operators and our Municipal Utilities Director, Mark O'Neill. It does not go to the advisory boardroom, so, all credit to them.
Sean, I do have one question. There was something you said there about trying to, one of the goals is a successful startup of the new biosolids. What does that take? I just assumed that, okay, here's the old one, here's the new one, you just move over, but it's more complicated than that?
No, I think we want to activate the septic receiving station and put this facility online.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mark?
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation, Sean.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Mark, for all the work that you do over there, and your staff. Moving on, we will move on to the consent agenda, and this will be a roll call vote. Commissioners, do I have a motion? Commissioner Smith?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second? Commissioner Mayor?
I'll second the motion, Your Honor.
Any comments, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Mayor? Anyone? Okay, with that, would you please do the roll call vote? City Clerk?
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. We have one new business item, the resolution to approve and adopt the Community Master Plan, and this will be a roll call vote again, and City Clerk, background, please.
The City Planning Commission, assisted by city staff and the firm of Beckett and Reader, have completed a lengthy and transparent community process to produce a draft Community Master Plan. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on October first, two thousand twenty-four to review the draft Community Master Plan, where community members in attendance spoke highly in favor of the plan. After closing the public hearing, it was moved by C. Gottlieb, supported by M. Rayner, and unanimously approved to recommend that the City Commission approve and adopt the Community Master Plan in accordance with P.A. thirty-three of two thousand eight. Fiscal effect? None. Recommendation? Adopt the resolution to approve and adopt the Community Master Plan. Alternatives? Reject the plan and send back to the Planning Commission with documented specific reasons for the rejection of the plan.
Okay. Before I go to the commission, I'm wondering if our Chair, Sarah Middlefield, would like to, or Dennis Sankovich, would like to talk about the process? I know it's been a long and arduous process with a lot of community input.
Chair?
Okay.
Yes, I would say it was, it was a very multifaceted process, and the survey response, for those of us who do social science research, was astounding. We had a huge amount of feedback on that survey, lots of public forums all around town, and, yeah, the meetings that the Planning Commission held were pretty well-attended. There were certain pockets of vocal neighborhoods that were particularly involved, I would say. Pickleball is certainly something that the community needs to work on, that was loud and clear. But, yeah, I feel really good about the process, and I think there was lots of different ways for people to get involved, and I really appreciate the way that Dennis and Dave, because Dave's also in the room, also like made sure that the Planning Commission had time to really wrestle through the comments. My fellow Commissioner, Carrie Gottlieb, did a really good job of like combing through and categorizing the types of comments, and then we all went through, as members of the Planning Commission, to go through and think about where we could incorporate those comments into the plan, and so I think all around, it was a really collaborative process, it was very transparent, and I feel really good about the product that we're presenting you tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
She's the best. I don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. With that, I'll look for a motion. Commissioner Larson?
I move that we adopt the resolution to approve and adopt the Community Master Plan.
And may I have a second? Commissioner Mayor?
I will second that motion, Your Honor.
And would you like to comment?
Just thank you so much to the Planning Commission and the city staff for really making this a project with a lot of community outreach, a lot of community input, and really pulling it together to some, into something that we, the community, can look to as, you know, we move forward in making our future plans. So, thank you.
I would like to also echo a lot of gratitude and thanks to both the staff and the Planning Commission for the amount of time and energy that went into this. I'd like to also thank all of the volunteers we had on our Steering Committee, I believe it was called, for this, as well as the amount of engagement with, we had from the general public. I think we heard numerous times from our consultants that it was staggering the amount of public engagement and feedback they got throughout this process, so, it was really all around, just thank you, everyone.
Other comments? Commissioner Smith?
I just want to add that in a time when we often have a divided world and people questioning things, I feel incredibly proud of this plan and how transparent and authentic it is, and how that comes across to the members of the community, and I think we've got a lot of engagement and effort and involvement that many other communities don't have, so I'm just grateful that we've got something we can be proud of. Thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yeah, I'll jump on that wagon. Having gone through the last revision, I understand the magnitude of work that went into it, and it is, it is incredible. A lot of heavy lifting went on for this, so to have this living, breathing document, you know, be able to be adopted tonight and be able to be revised as time goes on, just is quite a, an accolade to the work that the Planning Commission and our staff members have done. So thank you so much for, for all of that work, and I think that it's, I think I might have missed one, I thought, maybe I made all of the public forums, but to see, even coming out of COVID time, and when people were a little bit hesitant to gather and things, the amount of feedback that people came and gave in regards to, and I think it was nice that Sarah brought up, you know, specifics, so whether it's pickleball, or this area of town, or, you know, this larger aspect, how our land use is going to be impacted with, with, with the master plan, all these different areas of interest, it was incredible. I mean, to see, you know, a couple hundred people go through the room at night and, and be willing to take time out of their day to give these ideas, it was really impressive, so kudos to the, to the community and its own right there. So, really great process and very well-thought-out master plan, so thank you, guys.
It's hard to add anything to that, but I, I'll just add that, yes, I think Commissioner Schlegel talked about the thanking the community, and I was always impressed with how detailed the community got in reading the, all of the depth of the plan and commenting, and then, and then how the Planning Commission really paid attention to each one of those comments, and it's a very impressive process, and I'm really glad to see it come to the point where we can actually approve it and, and use it as our roadmap for the future, or at least for the next ten years. So with that, I will ask our City Clerk to do the roll call vote.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanley?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
Yes. Motion passes six to zero. Which brings us to the final public comment period, and comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments, and you can step up to the podium. Anyone for public comment? Okay, public comment is now closed, and we'll move on to comments from the commission, and I am going to begin with you, Commissioner Mayor. Do you want me to come back to you?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay. Yours, yours, Protem Hanley?
Let's go. I would first like to start by, I know they already all ran away, but thanking Detective Kinnonan for all of his time and service to the city of Marquette. We are very lucky to have the police force that we do in this area, and the amount of effort that they all put in, switching over when we have, when we're short-staffed, doesn't matter, they will all cover wherever, and it's not unnoticed by the people of this commission. Other than that, I think it's been a very productive day between the work session and this. I'm very happy to see the master plan approved, and I think the Planning Commission is also very happy to see it approved. They have put in a lot of time and effort, and so I'm sure everyone's happy, and I'm excited to start actually working through this master plan and starting to hit some of those big spots, so, that's it.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that's, you know, you heard my spiel on the, on the master plan, so that was great. I thought yesterday was a really nice opening of the, you know, all-inclusive park down at Lower Harbor. It was great to accompany that with Indigenous Peoples' Day, and to celebrate those two, those two very important occasions yesterday in the city of Marquette. I do want to circle back and encourage people to get their passes for the dog park. I'll be there with Izzy, my yellow lab, and the reason for that isn't really for the revenue, as much as it is we need to be able to have an idea of how many, you know, we're trying very hard to have either a summer and a winter park, or another option for us in the city of Marquette for the summertime, and I know that we're working on it, but we can't sit there and look at how many people used that park last, or in the years past, because only seventy people went in and got their passes last year, when I can go out there for a three-hour stint and see well over a hundred people go in and out of that place, and I would venture on a daily basis, it gets, you know, a couple to a few hundred people on those beautiful days of winter. So we need to have that, that ability to track the usage and the demand, and the fact that, yes, people are, have been asking for it for years, but it's fifteen dollars, so get your pass, help us pay for the poop bags and everything else that comes with the maintenance of that park. You know, they spend probably, I think last year when I asked, it was somewhere around ten thousand dollars just on, on dog poop bags, so that's, you know, something to think about when you're, when you're dealing with, and that's throughout the city of Marquette, but it's just something for us to keep in mind, so please get your dog passes and encourage your friends to do it, and I hope to see you out there.
Commissioner Smith?
You know, I would just wanted to acknowledge those that came and spoke at public comment. I always appreciate folks expressing their opinion and sharing what they would be interested in having us talk about. We have discussed the fluoride topic at length, we've worked with our water treatment experts, and at this point in time, we don't intend to do anything different about that unless something changes significantly with the federal or the state government. So I know that it is something, you certainly can come talk at public comment all you want, but I don't see it changing in the near future. Always would be happy to read any information you want to email to us or provide to the City Clerk, but that's where it stands, and I do appreciate you expressing your opinion and coming to our meeting, because that is democracy in action, so, thank you. Geraldine, thank you for saying something about the Marquette Citizens Academy, I'm glad that you've had a great experience, and I would just love seeing the different ways that we're able to engage our public and get folks more active in the community. And then just finally, to Sarah and Carrie, thank you for taking the time to come here and be present for the Community Master Plan and for your efforts on a really big and important project. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, just really quick, this, this last week there, I had the pleasure of attending the Twenty-Seventh Annual Arts Awards here in Marquette. It was just, you know, nice to see the community coming together to celebrate artists and advocates and educators alike, and what makes Marquette a really unique place to live. And then on top of that, again, just another thank you to the Planning Commission and the city staff for, you know, these last, this last years of hard work that have really been put into making, making something come, come forward that is going to help guide the city, you know, from here on out, so, thank you.
Commissioner Mayor?
I don't think I have anything further.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I guess to the Planning Commission and all those, the staff that were involved in the master plan, thank you, thank you. And I think the fact that we have two commissioners here who are, have our previous participants on the Planning Commission helps us to understand how detailed and involved and important that is, and we'll be using that for, the plan for a lot of years to come. I just also want to comment on how busy we have been in Marquette the last several days, you know, we have had, and I'm sure if I start listing them, I'll miss some, but we've had a car rally, and we had arts awards, and we had a five K, and we had different political events, and we had a small basketball game with eleven thousand people at the Dome, and, and another political event that was over a thousand people, and we had the kids' Cove ribbon-cutting, and as I asked our city manager what kind of problems we had with all of those people around town, and she even had people on call in case that we needed some extra help, and there was nothing, right?
Correct. Nothing ever happened.
What a wonderful tribute to Marquette, that all of those people can come and enjoy our city and have a safe, safe events and a good time, and they were all very well-appreciated, and it's nice to see all of that happening. So, thank you to the city staff that was there. So thank you to the city staff that was there for us, keeping us safe, and for those that were on call in case something happened. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you. Just a couple of announcements that I have on our end. We mentioned dog permits, our dog park permits and licenses, and, and elections, and actually, dog and cat licenses and permits for the city off-leash area will be unavailable to purchase at the city clerk's office from October 28th through November 6th. So that, that short period of time where resources are being dedicated and office spaces being, being dedicated to managing an election is, is going to impact that service. Dog licenses will still be available for purchase, so those licenses, not the dog park permits, but the licenses, you can still get those at your local vet or at the county treasurer's office. And then, once November 6th comes around, maybe give them another day, so maybe the 7th, you can now get those licenses and permits then, as normal, in the city clerk's office. So keep that in mind for that short period of time while they manage something like an election. It is fall, and fall leaf collection is going to be starting, so actually, brush collection is going to start first. Brush collection starts next Monday, October 21st, and runs through that week, October 25th. After that, starting October 28th, leaf collection will be starting, and that goes for two weeks through November 8th. The map for each of your zones of when things will be picked up can be found online. Do not wait. Do not, you know, do not wait. Just try to get those out as, as soon as you can, and close enough to your time period, because you don't want to miss it, because once they, the crews have gone by for brush and leaf, they are transitioning that equipment over for things like snow. So we cannot come back. We cannot come back. We will not be able to come back. However, if you do need to, to do something, you don't want to wait necessarily even for crews, or you miss it, you can use the compost and brush drop-off site that will be, continue to be open on Tuesdays from 3:00 p.m. till dusk, and Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and that tentative closing date, if Mother Nature allows us to be, will be around November 5th. So if you do miss it, you can still get those taken care of, but you'll have to bring those to the drop-off site. And then the rubbish drop-off site, the last day for that will be Wednesday, October 30th. Please pay attention, though, or double-check on our Facebook page to make sure that we haven't reached capacity for that day, because if it is one of those last remaining days, I know there's a big rush to use it, we may have to close early if we hit that capacity, and there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. So do a quick double-check on that one before you head out with your, your trailer. And both of those do close at dusk, just so you know. I believe that is all I have. Thank you.
And then that will conclude our meeting at 6:48 p.m.